Hey guys, I'd like to open in prayer if you please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd just like to come to you tonight with a gracious and grateful heart and I'd ask the Lord that you would be with us tonight, that you would instill in us just the empathy, the compassion, Lord Jesus, to put our community first and foremost in all of our decisions. I'd ask for the intellect and the intelligence to contemplate over each and every decision so that, Lord, we can put our patrons first. Just watch over us, guide us, and be with us tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mark. If you want to take a minute, we'll do the previous minutes.
Should've got them, should've been emailed.
Right there.
Yeah.
You were right.
Awesome. Right?
I didn't know when it started.
No, I didn't.
Oh, yes, that's why. Yes, yes, yes.
I'll make the motion to be approved. Minutes is written.
Motion is second approved. Minutes printed. Any discussion? Not all in face to say aye.
Aye.
Cause then sign. Motion carries. So, so for housing grants, just council?
I'm gonna give the report for her. Yep.
What with that?
Second.
Why don't we bring the fair board up so they can get them going?
Sounds good.
Lake County Fair Board.
No, no, no. Oh, do bring a chair and sit down.
I'll sit down up here. That work? Make myself at home. We're always looking for ways to fix up the fairgrounds and, and give us some new opportunities. We've kind of finished up with the sheep barn that we recently built down there. We put the end caps on the roof, kind of tidied that up. We'd like a new project. We'd like to continue replacing some of the buildings down there. The beef barn's got some weak rafters in it, kind of deteriorating. You know, I don't know how old it is exactly, but it's old. It's got some age on it. The hog barn, there's been a lot of complaints about our hog barn. Roof needs to be raised on it, needs more electricity, needs more water. You know, as far as fixing it goes, I don't think there's a point in fixing it, but we could build something new to replace it. With that being said, we kind of had the grand idea, maybe instead of replacing every little individual building, that maybe we'd build one big building down there. And then that idea kind of spurred into, you know, maybe we ought to make it a little bigger. I guess what we're asking for is the, the permission to pursue something more. We would, you know, what we've had in mind is one large building to replace the beef barn, the current hog barn, and the fitting barn. You know, and I guess we'd tear down all three of them and build one big one. We haven't decided yet whether to tear down the show ring. There's been some, you know, it's about 50/50, you know, probably ought to leave it, you know, because it's a nice building, why tear it down? You know, and then, but that limits our options, which isn't a bad thing. That just says we have to go a different route as far as, you know, if we do leave it there, which is no problem. Another thought has been, you know, a community center, something on the end of it where it's, you could have a large enough venue to have a wedding dance or something like that. I know what we're asking is kind of an open-ended question here, but we have to start somewhere. You know, we're more than willing to have some input. We got some very loose bids. You know, we just called Morton just to ask, you know, what something like this project like this size would cost. They gave us a couple of different options. He went through and he priced out, you know, what it would take to rebuild each individual building down there by itself as well. Granted, they're not firm quotes or bids, they're just ideas, you know. I think we could build each individual building cheaper than one big building. But if you build one big building, you know, you really didn't, I don't want to say, you've got a lot of options as far as different things you could have down there then. So, like you said, we are open to input. It's just an idea and we have to start somewhere.
I guess the first thing coming to my mind, I would dare say, probably gonna run into some opposition about tearing the show barn down.
We've, we've heard a lot.
The which one?
Be the, the show barn. Cause it's new enough that people still remember who contributed.
Right. Yep. The lean to on the side of the show ring, to be more specific, I think was donated in memory of.
Well, I think there were some other parties that actually helped build the initial structure too.
Okay.
And it's been a while, but hasn't been long.
Well, like I said, that was our.
Just to the east of the bathroom.
Yes, yes.
Right, right.
It was our initial idea to tear it down and go on, and then that was raising our attention, so we have no problem working around that idea. That, that doesn't bother us.
So, so just for discussion, when you're talking one major building, are you, are you pig people, beef people, and everybody gonna?
Things gonna get lost?
Sectioned off, or are you?
The ideas that we're working with is kind of like when you go down to the state fair. You know, you have your, granted, that's a huge building, but.
Right.
You kind of, you got your beef section, your hog section, your sheep section. Initially, we probably wouldn't, with the exception of a community center, if we did that, that would have to be concrete floors, but the rest of it, for now, we aren't gonna concrete, with the exception of the hog and the sheep area, those animals.
Really too much?
Yeah, it'd create a, create, create a mess and it, it just works better than to be on concrete, so, you know, but that's a little 30-foot slab, you know, the porch, so. These are ideas, and I know there's a price tag affixed to the bottom of it. They are rough quotes, they are not set in stone. They do not include sheet rock, they do not include, um, concrete, electric, and all that. Like you said, we just went through Morton, that was kind of the name-brand deal, and, you know, we're, it'd obviously be something we'd get quotes from.
So then essentially, is it gonna be a pole barn? Kind of like a, like an open area?
Fully enclosed. It's kind of what we're shooting for. That gives you a lot more options. I know there's been some talk about getting a winter livestock show in here, something in the, in the late fall or early spring. You know, if you have it, if it's fully enclosed, then it's cold outside. It's gonna be cold in the building, but it's not windy.
Right.
Um, you know, if you ever want to store anything in there, it's more secure if it's in a enclosed building.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we did something like that, we'd make sure we had the big enough doors on the sides, but we really don't want to limit ourselves, you know, we really want to be, if you're gonna build it and it's a grand idea, you might as well.
So in essence, your single building theory would encompass everything from the west side of the new sheep barn clear to the new bathroom?
East side of, well, the east side of the show ring now, I think, is kind of where we're at. So, one of these, and I probably gave it to you, this one is out. It's 200 and. It's 81 foot wide from, the current beef barn is 97 feet wide, so this would be a little bit narrower than that. There would be no center supports in it.
So is that, is that running east or west or west-south?
Yes, east and west lengthwise.
Okay. See, this one's 81 by 200.
Yeah, we've got different sizes here, if you want to pass it around, take a look. They're just different options, they're real rough options. It's, I believe it's 175 feet from the west edge of the sheep barn to the east end of the chicken coop, which would be about smack dab in the middle of the show ring. Now, I give you that figure because if you were to tear down the show ring and build, you'd want to leave some gap there anyways.
But in all honesty, if you're gonna do something like that, could you encompass the poultry?
Yes, it would be. Well, the sheep barn, we have received grants, donations, I guess you would say, memorial to the sheep barn. The people that made them memorials have already stated that they would be okay with that being turned into a sheep barn or a poultry barn. That way the poultry's not.
Cause in all honesty, the current poultry barn is the isor.
Oh, yeah, it's pretty rough.
So, yes.
It's pretty rough.
We would, yes.
That's beautiful.
So what are, what are you guys thinking on finding? Initially, it started out as a Post Rock Community Grant. I say that right?
The Post Rock Community Foundation, the Dane G Hanson Grant, and then we were just informed that the USDA also has grants available that we would be able to pull from. It is, if you use, we were told if you use it monthly as an agricultural teaching facility, which we could use it for 4H meetings for both, to all three groups, if you have some kind of an educational meeting in it so many times a year, they will really push and give you a grant. So that's a new one I'm just looking into, trying to get a grant for it.
It takes about 18 months to two years.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we just learned about that.
From the time you get it, and then you have so much of a wait period, it just depends on which, where it falls into, I mean, that's the time of the year.
Dane G Hanson was our big one. They did a big one for Smith Center, just got theirs done, and Dane donated a major amount to that. That was, but that was the only two we knew about, and then we learned about the USDA, so we thought we'd just, and if we don't get it all done at once, I mean, it's, it'd be a work in progress.
Think about it. There's, way back when, there was discussion of trying to put something on the fairground. I guess first and foremost, just always remember, no matter what you're pursuing, just make sure it's not a problem that the city owns the property and another entity is applying for the fund.
Yeah.
Just, it'd be a shame to get way deep into it, and then all of a sudden, some bureaucrat shows it, so you can't do that.
Yeah.
So, just keep it in mind.
Right. If that was to happen, Steve, is there a way the city would apply for the grant? Is that what would have to happen?
Well, I guess my question is, would the city be able to qualify, you know?
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Cause there are other stuff, entities, stuff that comes into that, that comes into play that messes with budgets and stuff.
Gotcha.
Anything municipal-wise, I, I just, it's, it's been my experience, whenever you're pooling monies from all different entities, like, you know, maybe there's something municipal-wise that we could say, hey, like you said, community center type deal.
That's kind of what we.
But there's always these little, you know, provisias, well, yeah, you can do that, but.
What are your feelings on a community center? Something large enough to host a rather big venue, you know, a wedding or something like that?
Well, a number of years ago, there was a, an idea floated around for an emergency shelter. I don't know if any of you guys remember that.
Talking about the high school?
Well, high school was talked about, fairgrounds was talked about. It was gonna be one of those igloo, big cement igloo dome thing, and then also serve as an emergency shelter where everybody could go. You know, the idea's been, oh yeah, take everybody down, put them in a flood plain. Which, and it, it, it didn't get much past the talking stage, but like I say, that idea of the community center has been.
Brought up before.
Brought up before, yeah.
Well, think about how many venues head over to Vespur, simply because of the gym.
Well, look at the, I mean, just like in our Christmas lighting last weekend, that place was packed, there was no more people, there was no room for anyone.
Yeah.
And we couldn't, I mean, I think you have a bigger venue area, people will come, but people know this space.
I guess the other question, just, just for sake of conversation, would the Legion feel like they're being abandoned? Would the sale barn feel like they're being abandoned?
The sale barn, others are giving us your blessing on that, yep.
I'm, I'm just saying, you know, obviously, those are the two, other than the high school commons, you know.
We don't want to step on the, on the Legion's feet or the senior center's feet, you know, by doing something like this, but the, the size and the space that they offer compared to, something like, we're looking for.
Right.
Basically, a 50 by 81 foot is a rough idea.
With a kitchen?
With a kitchen.
It would have to have a kitchen if it's a community.
Right.
And a bathroom.
Time span, two years?
That'd be ideal.
That would be ideal.
Two to five was.
I mean, two to five would be.
You're not planning on having it there by next fair?
No.
Oh, it's like.
Ideally, if, if it was something we could, funding for, you know, before our current fair, then possibly after the 2019 fair, we could start, but I don't see it happening that fast.
Okay.
Cause you gotta wait for what, fall greens now, or spring greens now?
Yeah.
Or what, April?
Hanson goes monthly.
Is it monthly?
Hanson is monthly, and the Post Rock is, is when you got the wait till spring.
Yeah, there's a fall on the spring.
And the USDA just, like, those are just dependent.
Was Hanson used for the new bathroom?
That I don't know, I was not.
For USDA, you'd have, you're in the, you'd have to have it in by the end of the year.
Is there a limit, how many times you can go to the well?
It depends on which.
Yeah, like I said, they have different.
I know they got a grant from.
Avenues.
Was Hanson used for grant?
I know Post Rock was.
Yeah.
I thought Hanson was in all.
But I don't, I don't, I don't remember Hanson. I feel like it was Post Rock.
It's got a lot of things to go down through too.
I'm sure.
Like arena or anything since it's agricultural livestock.
You know.
I could ask, always ask.
So, I'm, I'm just thinking, anywhere and everywhere, you could.
Well, that's how we got a lot of donations for fair last year, you know? I, I expanded the avenues of all my feed routes, all my arena. That's how we got a lot of last year.
Well, that, that was a question that came to my mind too, visit with our insurance guy, say, you know, one huge building, how does that, you know, taxes?
Well, if we are, if it's a city property, it's not paid, we are using it for city functions, it is not taxed, it's only our properties that are taxed, property tax-wise, that are not actually being used for a city function, that are just, that are just holding them, so.
So the way I live.
That makes sense.
Wouldn't pay taxes, do I?
Pay property tax on the arena.
You do.
Are we?
We'd have to.
The fairgrounds, we, no.
What?
We do not pay taxes on the playground.
Oh, yes, we do.
We're only saying.
Had that conversation with this, uh, because we're assessed on the, the, where the arena is.
There are the three parcels that we, the taxes on. Part of the railroad.
Hey.
And I was, hadn't got this far, cause I wasn't that deep in my pile yet. Um.
Because I.
Area 1 South Main.
I, I visited with Roger Wright years ago concerning, you know, what the, what the status was of the area where the arena is, that field.
Yeah.
Well, okay, let me be clear, the field or the fairgrounds?
Well.
It's the field that you pay taxes on, not the fairgrounds.
Okay.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, that, I mean, I'm just saying that the field would be nine acres, correct?
That'd be about right, from the.
You're paying taxes on nine.
From years down to years.
It's a little nine acres.
But that wouldn't be the entire fairgrounds.
Does it include the ball court?
No.
That's what I'm saying, what we pay taxes, that's $22.91 per, or I guess, well, if you wanted to get technical, $45.
If you don't mind me asking, why do you pay taxes on that again? How'd you say that?
So, the proper, like, we are using this for a city function, the city hall, therefore, it's a municipal, municipally used, therefore, we are not paying taxes to another.
Entity.
Entity, another governmental entity for what we're actually using. So we have, we own some lots that are not used by the city, but we just own them, and that's why we are paying taxes on those properties.
But nothing at the fairground.
But like, the fairgrounds would be.
Other than the arena down there.
Right, and the same thing would be that field.
The, the lot, because that used to be separate.
Okay.
Years ago, that actually went with the parcel that Dale and Cheryl had.
Okay.
Came down.
So anything that's used as city, for a city function, would not be counted.
So are you saying if we did put the building on there, would be no property taxes? I'm not part of it, is that what you're thinking, or what do you think?
If it's a city, it's part of the fairgrounds, it would be under the same.
Umbrella.
As everything else down there.
With the exception of that community center, that might throw wrench in things.
Well.
Wedding deal or something like that.
Why would, it's still city property.
Is it?
I mean, if I rent this building out, for people that want it, it's still city property.
The other question, insurance-wise, is it?
That would be the only thing.
What do you, what are you looking at? If you built, if you rebuilt the existing buildings new versus one multi-site or one single-use, is there a big difference in insurance costs, you know?
Find out.
It would be, what we, because we would be paying for it.
To be insured, everything else, though.
You'd have to ask the insurance guy what it would be.
Yeah. Those are just.
Cause right now, don't we pay insurance on each separate building at the fairground?
Yes.
You know, sheep and goat, hogs, cattle, poultry.
A number of years ago, I don't know if.
And livestock.
We realized we had some important buildings that weren't insured.
Yeah, exactly.
One being the concession stand that Lions Club had built new. For a number of years, that wasn't insured. Think the new softball.
Softball concession.
Yeah, press box. That was there for a while, wasn't insured, so. It's just questions you need to ask, I mean.
Yep.
But as far as a green light, I'd say go for it.
Said, all we're asking for is, if you tell us no now, there's no need in us making further phone calls and.
Well, I was gonna say, it doesn't cost a lot to ask questions, I mean.
Get all your stuff together.
Yeah, drink big, man, drink big.
Should be nice to use it one, two, or three times a year if you spend that kind of money on something.
That's just it, it's a nice property, it's great parking, you know, I mean.
Get a lot of use out of it, bring people to town for different.
I'm thinking, you can, you can start hosting FFA stuff.
Well, yeah, that's just it, you have a winter show circuit here. You know, Hayes is wanting to get rid of the show circuit. We go to the North Central Kansas Livestock Circuit, my kid's show on it, and it's Russell Hayes, Stockton Smith Center, and Hillsey. And Hayes has been trying to get out of that, and we've been begging them to do it here. And I'm gonna tell you what, there's, there's 300 kids, and it's a lot of people that it was bringing for a weekend, you know, and there's opportunity there.
If he's done. I'd say make inquiries, keep us apprised of where you're at.
I was gonna say.
If, if you could, just give her some basic numbers and she can run by Marshall.
Size and all that kind of stuff. So only opposition is the show ring, that we're just talking about?
Well, and I don't know, that's, it's, it's an abstract thing, you know?
It is, you know, and I guess here's my, here's my thing, you talk about verification of everything. Is it gonna be an isor if we put a beautiful building up and we have this white pole barn? I know it's valued by very many people, and thank you for the donations, but is it gonna look outsourced?
Currently, I don't think.
Morton, Morton did make the comment that if, if we had to leave that show ring, they would, you know, they could come up with an option to, but they're building up against it, wrap it, and they're tin, that way it'd match, it, it wouldn't be an isor, and it's still being used, it is an option.
I just, I just, I guess my observation would be, at one time, that building was this building to that generation, if that makes sense.
Indoor is always an option.
And I understand that, that's what I'm saying, it was never.
See, what kind of feedback, yeah, I mean, if somebody's really upset or something.
Well.
But I don't, I'm out of. Nothing I'm just saying, you know.
But on this, that one.
And maybe there's.
One big building. Yeah, the monster on foot.
Their name on the.
Oh, this is, I just want you to work, cause their name. Yeah.
Not hitting mine, but I mean.
Right, like you said, it's an honor to the.
Build one big livestock building and later on pursue.
Making noise.
No, it's fine about it.
Jennifer, I do have some papers you can run copies of if you would like to, for your insurance guy.
How big a difference are they in the buildings? Do you know what I mean?
Footage.
Right, but.
Well, if we have the community center, that's gonna completely change the insurance on it, if it's just like one show building.
I, I feel like I have what I need in regards to square footage. The question would be more what's, what all that entails.
Finished, unfinished.
That price does not include concrete, does, it, it's basically just what you see in the picture, it's walls and a roof. It don't include the concrete, it don't include finishing a, a community center. That's all steel.
Steel, the frame.
Yeah, all steel frame. 81 foot, single, is it single-span, right, there's no center supports.
Free span.
Yeah, free span, there you go.
Until you get tired of it.
Is it a pole barn on the sides?
Say what?
Is it a post-barn on the sides with steel trusses?
I'm not sure what Morton is.
Pole.
Are they poles?
They're all steel frames.
They only do steel wrap on wood.
That's right.
Good.
And the Morton was just the easiest one to contact, we got a whole people we can talk to, you know? I mean, we talked about a wood building, but we'd have to have that middle beam, you know, if we can't go over 60 on a wood without a middle beam, so then you, if we did tear the ring down, we talked about an indoor arena, well, you have a pole sitting in the middle of your arena, what do you do? So that's kind of why we have to seal top anyway.
With an 81-foot crosspan.
We just didn't want to waste a lot of time getting bids if we weren't gonna have the opportunity to do it. So if we have the opportunity, we'll pursue it. If you guys okay it, we'll pursue it, if not, you know, we might.
Have to check on all the stuff that needs to be checked on to make sure that it's all all right.
But like, which would be, you're done to check on insurance.
We need to do greens.
But by same token.
To make sure.
I'd, I'd like to see you go ahead and have a, have an idea or a bid or a quote on replacing the current ones at their current site, like you talked initially.
I got that.
Really, the hogs, they're the only ones with concrete in them now, right?
Hogs and sheep.
Hogs and sheep.
Yep.
Cause cattle barns.
No hogs would make a difference. Dragged the same as the sheep one, I mean, it'd be about the same, put up the same if you didn't put something different.
Yeah.
And then we talked about removable pins been on the inside, you know, so it could all be open.
Yeah, the, the sheep and the hogs, if we were to build a new building, all the pins would be like what's currently in the sheep barn now, all removable, that we can collapse it, and even the livestock, you can collapse it, push everything till the walls get out of the way, and you're left with one big open space.
Yeah. Washer outside, we talked about. There's a lot of options.
Oh, hey, yeah. I like the idea.
It's a lot of money, but I mean.
I think you'd give a lot of opportunity to community, thank you, John. Well, feel free to come and visit with us any time. As we go.
You know, you're okay to pursue?
Comes up.
Yep. Thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you guys for dreaming this up.
Thanks.
Yep.
See stuff in the air.
Raimi, you wanna come? Do your thing? Come over here and sit down.
Well, Ryan just saw me at school today, I said, and said he'd like to hear that day on the library, well, the easiest way to do that is to open the door and look.
Make it happen.
I'm, I didn't hear a word that she said.
Open the door and go look.
Wanna check it out?
You just noticed what you said? What'd you do? I thought you had it fixed.
Okay, so all these you guys here with the tiny closets, we now.
I think it would have been in there hardly.
Just cool because you can kind of see how the openness will be. Well, see that then you can fill it with shelves and books, but yeah.
You seen there where they painted around those bookshelves and they repainted it?
Yeah. That was about fifteen years ago. You should drink some water, kid. Huh?
I remember they gonna wall that off then or did they leave that door?
This door, their old doors will be there.
Huh?
The door will still be there.
Oh, will it?
Yeah.
And thank you Jennifer for letting us do library things in City Hall.
No big deal. By the way, Tiffany was looking for you today.
I know. She gets her headset. Close on nothing.
Well, I was having a meeting and she was pretty adamant and I was kind of just about as adamant. She's like, well, can you call her right now? I was like. Don't. I'm usually kind of like, but I'm like.
And the box here is for your stuff. I met him here at seven o'clock this morning and I had, I was supposed to have about seventy items and thinking if I only had about thirty-five, pulled stuff out from the high school.
Yeah.
And left the rest in a box.
Yeah.
We do appreciate everything the city has worked with us on. I personally am getting a lot of positive comments about saving new doors and things like that.
It looks nice.
It does look nice. Any FFA?
It's got a board on the wall.
Did come and help.
There used to be an air conditioner in there. And so now it's a whole.
How many, four? How many years ago we put the central air in?
Six.
Oh, I was gonna say five or six. But there was an air conditioner there and then in the little window on the south. That's where the air conditioner was for the library. Well, then we, we got a grant from the, um, library or from the CKLS.
Yeah.
For the time being.
They are going to fix it and I, yeah, yeah, he said he's gonna.
But CKLS, we got a grant, we got the new air conditioner, the central air, so they went for the whole.
I've talked to Terry and we're discussing, um, also painting the interior of this room and that room. Painting the tile and the paneling and everything just to like upgrade it and everything. Well, yeah, it's like this one will be really nice and at least it'll make this one look better, so. I've been getting rid of a lot of stuff too. I got a pile over there that all goes to recycle. When I get it, get it. Cause Office Max scares you quite, gives the city quite a bit if they recycle all their old equipment. Anybody need TV?
Golden beast king.
Yeah.
That's the library.
What's that thing on the left side?
The water fountain or the, no.
No, the, right next to the monitor, that.
Oh, the her scanner.
Oh, it's for the scanner for the books. That you're hooked up to the, um, CKLS, um, checkout and all that kind of stuff.
You'd be there forever.
Right here.
We'll serve that.
Where's the bell?
Keep moving.
Yeah.
So much.
Quick meeting.
Yeah, I told JC, I said, we should have a pretty quick meeting tonight.
Yeah, we need your report, yeah, you're right.
I have not.
So, can we wrap it up dudes?
For the background, do you think that that's good enough parking to store wherever around there? I mean, I heard Haley say there's a lot of good.
There's a lot of questions about that.
She said it's great parking. I was like.
Oh, it's for, yeah.
And the mud, and I say, and also rain. Great, long and dry.
Like, I get it for like agricultural or whatever else, but for like, if you have a community center, you're gonna have old people in wheelchairs out there. Right, yeah, that's all.
Another grant.
Should cut to the field, okay?
They're talking about the field that's to the east of where they do the tractor pull is what they're talking about, isn't it? Isn't that what the field?
Tractor pulls, right.
Isn't that the field?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Just the audio.
And thank you Steve for allowing the library to use your trailer. It is now unloaded and back in your possession.
Glad it worked out. Like I told you on the phone though, I don't know if I can keep it clean until touch time is ready to move that, but we'll see what happens.
Okay. We'll figure something out. And the whole city council did not hear me say, JC was part of one of the FFA teams. I actually put JC in charge of supervising the trailer when they were loading it, so.
Well, hang, hang on just a second if you would.
Sure.
I just want to ask the council while, while it's rushing your head, uh, without a doubt, I think we need to pitch in the amount.
I think we compensate that five hundred.
Well, at least. Now, do you guys want to leave it like a running tab until you're completely done instead of us doing a piecemeal?
We can. I don't know of anything else though that's gonna come up.
If we can do that.
I'm just saying.
Construction, it's remodel. What are you talking?
You touch one thing here and then.
You can have a chain reaction.
I guess just to allay your fears, we're, we're gonna make it right on anything you run into extra that we should. Not, not an issue there, but what I'm saying is, do you want to just like say, wait till?
We can, uh, because.
Does that cause any problem?
We're a long ways from completing grant money at this point.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can do it that way if the city would, would rather. Yeah, it's fine.
But is it okay with you? That's what we're asking.
Yeah, it's fine with me. I keep track of it.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, by all means do that. So, anybody, anybody have any qualms with that?
No, I think it's.
All right.
I like a roof over it.
Looks great, man.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks Kurt, thanks Raymond.
All right. Fair board, library, uh, what do you wanna?
You wanna go housing grant?
Okay, so you should have a piece of paper that talks about Silver Grove, CBD, V G, housing rehabilitation bids. The housing, um, board met today to go over the bids, um, this is their recommendations. And so there were three companies who ended up bidding, um, not on every property, but on the properties. And, um, based on those, um, this is what they're, so the way this works is, uh, there's their first recommendation and then if for some reason, when that is sent back to the, those construction companies, if they deny, decide, oh, you know what, we can't do it now or something, then there's a contingency bid. Um, and that's kind of built in there so that we can continue to move forward. Uh, so. Do you have any questions on that? So, as you can see, if you look at the amounts, um, we'll just take the property at one oh six South Kentucky. That's underneath, um, the twenty-five thousand that would be put in for the housing, so there's no issues there. If you go to the next property, one twelve South Kentucky, you can see that there's fourteen hundred dollars difference.
Right.
And so, um, they have to, he would, you know, that he would have to agree to pay that amount, um. So that award is if the client pays that gap over the twenty-five thousand. So in that case, it'd be fourteen thousand, fourteen hundred, excuse me, one thousand four hundred, excuse me.
Which one do we want?
So, anyway, um, as you can see, the second bids were, uh, most of them were considerably higher. So if, if for some reason those first bids were not taken, they would also have to, you know, they'd have to agree to pay the difference of that second bid. Um, anything over the twenty-five thousand.
So now does, uh, does the property owner get to meet with the contractors and decide if they can get along with them as far as, I don't want that guy in my house?
They went, they did come to each of these properties, um, during the bid process. So they were already in their homes or, or met with the prop, yeah, so they actually had met the, each one of those companies. Um, so I'm trying to think if there's anything else on. Any of these that I need to tell you about. Do you have any questions? So the, basically we need a, would need a motion to, um, award these bids according to the housing board's recommendation.
So, so is the third one here?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's different in its wording, bid of client choices, is that just because they're so close?
No, so on, on that particular property, there, um, is a, so, um, so you have the things that are required.
Right.
By the state and then there are some, some things that go over the twenty-five thousand or whatever. How many scenes, excuse me?
Gosh, you.
Okay, yeah. Um, um, let me pull that one up just a second here. So there's an alternate of, for that one to, of a stand-up shower and then an alternate to install an AC system. So they gave the bids for those.
Okay.
And, and those were thirty-five, like thirty-five hundred dollars. So she can agree to pay that and have that done as well, as part of that process. Um, and that's also helping bring that up to that standard.
But is that included in that, those bids?
Yes, and so, yeah, on those, um,
Okay.
was the alternate bid.
So basically hers is five thousand dollars, five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars over the twenty-five. So she has to pay, make up that difference, right? On the third, him and Anderson.
On the first bid, yeah.
Right.
Maybe. Um, that one, so, um, what's not exactly in here, um, those bids were originally the radon, we, what they found is they test, have to test each home for radon. Each, um, and when they do that, if they find radon, they have to install a radon system. So she bids, so that was not, so that's not part of the twenty-five thousand, that's a separate part of our housing grant because how, um, lead and radon have to be dealt with, but that's dealt with separately, not as part of the twenty-five thousand.
Oh, really?
So these, these bids originally had that thirty-five hun, like for that one, there was thirty-five to install a radon mitigation system. Um, that house hasn't been tested for radon yet. So two of them were and they did have radon, so they're making the assumption that all of them will probably have to have a radon mitigation system. So, but until they test it, if it, if they don't show any radon, then it won't need that. So that bid includes that, so that's.
So there's an automatic thirty-five hundred dollar addition to each bid?
And each one of those.
Right, exactly. So that, so that can kind of change.
So she's not gonna pay five thousand, she'll, she'll pay twenty-five hundred or whatever I figure.
Right, the gap, right. And so, and that is what the other thing is on this, is they have to write a letter committing to paying that gap before things move forward. So. So, yeah, so that, so there's some things in those bids that, um, are a little bit, can, there's, I want to say a little room bit.
Yeah.
That could change.
Mm-hmm.
The radon is thirty-five hundred, you said?
On that, on that particular one, it was bid at thirty-five hundred, yes.
Okay.
So. And she, like I said, some, some of that, uh, the radon in the lead doesn't come out of the twenty-five thousand that are for that property. She has it bid separately in our grant because those are things that usually have to be done. So she has a lot more for that, actually, above and beyond.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So.
So the radons could be dealt with and then still have the twenty-five thousand available?
Yes, yeah. But it was in, but they had them listed in their bids and so it was just a, anyway, one of those things.
So what do you need from that?
You need a motion.
Yep, a motion to award those bid recommended according to the housing board's recommendation.
We award them as a whole?
Yes, that's the easiest way. I mean, you can do them each separately by each address. But, but basically this was the document forwarded by the housing board.
So they leave the only five that apply to this first five?
So they do the first five.
Yeah.
And then after, um, all of these are done, well.
Yeah, these have to be finished before we can do any demolition or anything like that.
Basically, we have to be at the point of getting ready to pay them because then we know how much money we have left to do the next four or three, depending on how much money we have. So basically they do that to make sure where we're at with the money before we go ahead and, I mean, we already have more applications than this. But they, they take them, you know, first come, first served, and so these are the first five.
So if somebody, if this guy Meyer doesn't want to spend the extra ten thousand, then he just goes to the next one?
Yep, yep. And that's the thing is each of these, there's a walk away policy on all of them, so if they don't want to pay that gap, then they can walk away and say, no, I don't want any of it. And so then that funding would be going to the next person in line. So, yeah, so that's why they kind of wait. They do five, four or five, and then they see where we're at financially and then do the next. So, yeah, that's the only reason it's.
Well, I would entertain a motion to accept the bids as presented.
I'll make the motion when you say bids as presented.
Have a second.
Oh, second.
I'm gonna move to the second and to accept the proposed bids as offered, need discussion. If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Question carries. That's the extent of the housing?
Yeah, that's basically it with that. Um, I will say on each one of those bids, they kind of gave, uh, I think it's February or March before they actually would be able to start the work. So, just a side note.
All right. Agreed upon procedures reported maybe based on, assuming this is just protocol.
Um, yeah, and that would be when you sign. So there should be a agreed upon procedures, there, report. So this is a report from, um, Adams Brown, Baron Ball accountants.
Tells us what they're, what they're going to do.
Basically they went, um, once we hit that two hundred and seventy-five thousand mark and up until five hundred thousand, we had to do a agreed upon procedures and so they checked basically a couple of months worth of our books. Um, it's, I, I would compare it, I guess you could call it, you could call it a soft audit or whatever, but, um, because, uh, and she did, we did talk about as of right now, um, next year, we won't have to do a full audit based on our, um, receipts because we didn't receive most of this grant money yet, so we probably won't have to do an audit until twenty-one. So, well, we would have to, we'll have to do a great upon procedures, but, so. And that just kind of, basically, I think there was one exception found. The employee benefits fund. Went over there. Wretched amount in that account, but other than that was an exception found, so.
Well, at that point, I would entertain a motion to adopt or agree to. Same thing, yeah. Why it says copy?
Mm-hmm, yeah, this is the same thing. I was just looking at that.
Uh, let's say entertain a motion to adopt or enter into the agreement with Adams Brown Baron Ball on their agreed upon procedures.
I mean, we accept the procedures, the A, B, 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 whatever. Report.
Whatever. Second.
Second.
Been moving second to adopt the agreed upon procedures from Adam Brown Baron Ball. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Question carries. All right. Motograder. Uh. I, I guess the reason this is on, we, we talked about motograder before. I guess I can share a little additional information, I guess, from the last time, uh. When we did talk about, we thought we're, funding wise, we probably needed to wait till next year. Probably still do. Uh, however, in the meantime, uh, the county has replaced two of their motograders with brand new ones. And as such, there's two units that one, I believe is a ninety-three model, one is a ninety-five model. Ours is a sixty.
Sixty-four, sixty-five.
Just, just.
But it does have a cap.
Just for, yeah, uh, I took the liberty of just visiting with, with superintendent and he told me they really don't want to sell the graders till spring. And he was going to visit with the commissioners and just give them a heads up that the city of Silver Grove is.
It's interested.
Looking at one. Or looking, you know, looking, let's, let's leave it at that. Uh, in the meantime, we had a little blast of winter, which led me to question, uh, shaping up, it could be a bit of a winter, then we're more of a winter than we're used to. Uh, whether or not that means we need to push a little harder and maybe move a little sooner, I don't know, and I'm not advocating that. I'm just telling you kind of where we at. When I asked why they want to wait till spring, uh, one is their initial plan is to, what I was told is to sell them on purple wave.
County's done that before.
Yes.
Yeah.
They think come spring they might get a little better price. Uh, the other thing being, they want to actually hold them in reserve because they're thinking it might be a bit of a tough winter. That's what I was told. But anyway, uh, you know, whether or not we still think, you know, obviously want to do something in the near future, if not immediately. I guess my thought is, just as we go, the chance to buy a motograder, uh, one of them has actually been housed here in Silver Grove since it was new. It's the one that Larry Mitler ran and then one that Gary Frederick has run since. That's the ninety-five model, okay? The good points about that is you have an idea what kind of history it has. You're not buying a machine from who knows where and, I mean, I, hopefully, you know, the county be upfront with this. And I, I do understand, uh, the machines have had some, uh, major work done to them. The difference between that grader, either one of them and what we have is I, it's like the difference between the space shuttle and the Starship Enterprise. It's just.
Well, literally.
You can't imagine. But irregardless, uh, my question is, and, and just by virtue of time and stuff, having had a chance to go visit. I, I would like to go visit with the commissioners and just say, hey, we, we would like to buy a better grader. You have one for sale. And I, you know, it's a matter of how much money do, do the commissioners want?
Right.
Do they, are they gonna hold out and put it on a purple wave for absolute? We might buy it, we might steal it. I, I don't know that.
We could get it a lot more expensive or cheaper, it depends on whose bid.
Or do you go make the, make the argument, look, it's one Lincoln County entity selling a piece of equipment to another Lincoln County entity. It's still gonna serve Lincoln County residents. And, and to me, the major factor is knowing that history. I mean, you know, it's like buying a used car. Are you getting a lemon or somebody can tell you, hey, this has been a pretty good machine, this is what's been done to it, so. So this is the information I have for you guys since we've talked about this last, you know?
Well, if you're willing to go to a commissioner's meeting, I, I say power to you, Steve.
I, I would just make that, make that argument, you know? Uh, you guys think you could help us out? I, I have no shame in asking, you know, I mean, like I say, there's, there's a lot of.
Worst I could say is no.
Yeah. So, I mean, they have a budget to try and fill too, uh. I guess we talked about this ever so briefly. And I don't know, I have no facts about it, but there might be the outside chance, maybe they would sell it to us on contract instead of paying for it all of the time.
Right, right.
You know, maybe we could take two years to pay for it. If, I mean, it, it all rests with them, what they want to do.
Now, Steve, there's a considerable size difference in the graders, isn't there?
Well.
From what we have towards the county users.
When you say size, you're talking length?
I'm talking blade, uh, you know, blade width and wheel baseline.
It might be just a little, it's not gonna be a huge difference.
It's not.
Uh, moldboard width, you know, like when they're dragging the roads, they have what they call their extensions on.
Right, right.
And stuff, uh, there again, we've never, or we've never had one that I know of, but, uh, now whether they're putting the snow plow that was on that one, on the new one, I don't know. I don't know how that parts were, you know, whether we would be interested in a snow plow, if it comes with it or not, I don't know.
Well, that's true, yeah.
But anyway.
You could bury a lot of cars real fast with that snow plow down the middle of the road.
You see that one that's got like a separate beel on the end of it, yeah, and they just like drop it down when they pass the driveway?
Yeah, yeah.
And then they lift it up.
Was that, wasn't that up in Alaska?
I don't, yeah.
As you're going to an intersection, you know, he's plowing the roads, this thing comes down and it just carries the snow across the intersection and he lifts it.
Yeah.
So basically he has a model in the road.
Yeah, you don't have to go through and clean your intersections.
That's just ballpark idea what I was told. So.
That's a pretty doggone good deal. She asked me.
I mean, if you not.
For what?
Cause new one is what? Thirty-year-old grader too.
Cause realistically.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
That's what I thought.
You know, the existing road grader we have is fifty years old.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, uh, we tinkered on it a couple of times, put a new set of blades on the moldboard, turned the joysticks around on the outsides and messed with them so they wouldn't bash your hands into the windshield, uh, cause it's like gear, gearbox and chain, you know, driven versus hydraulic.
It's old school, yeah.
Yeah, it's not hydraulic.
You gotta be careful with it. I mean, it, the, the machine functions and runs and you're patient with it. But, you know, if you look at it overall, uh, the tires are dry rotting on it, even though they're inner tube, but they are split rings on it. I don't know if the newer equipments have splits. Or, you know.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, but.
There, I would like to think there's, there, there is some residual value in the machine we have, probably, maybe.
It by all means is a functioning, it still functions.
Yeah.
What's a new motograder called?
That's what he said to us.
A new one is quarter million.
The one Frederick King's driving, that's what I was told.
Okay.
But it doesn't even have steering wheel.
Are you serious?
Yeah, and there's no, and like the, the model, the ninety-five model.
Yeah.
You have steering wheel, but all your levers are right here. All, you know, there's like four or five levers on each side of the steering wheel. Everything comes back at you, just like flying a jet plane almost.
Yeah, yeah.
Steering wheel, everything comes at, yeah, the new ones just sit there. Your joysticks.
Yep.
So.
Does it come with GPS?
Well, it may, well. It's not GPS.
It's come with Wi-Fi.
But it does, uh, put it this way, cat can tell where that thing's at and what it's doing.
Oh, yeah.
And whoever owns it.
Which is like your car.
Well.
They keep tabs on you.
Russell County had an individual that superintendent looked back and realized that motor, he could look and he realized that motograder hadn't moved for two and a half hours.
They didn't work for the county or either.
Showed up.
Hmm, it doesn't work that way in this county.
Anyway, so I, this, just FYI, uh, I don't know what, do you got any comments fund-wise that we might consider?
That we don't have?
Funds are tight right now.
We have limited funds.
Right.
Now, next year's a different story, right?
Well.
Maybe we should have been like, give us some sales tax on the ballot.
Next year though, we, you know, not planning on buying a building. Not planning on making an early water payment or paying off a loan, right? I mean, those are major things that we did this year.
So you're spending the money before we get it, that was telling me.
And at some point, we, we probably really need to come up with a capital improvement plan because we don't have a way, I mean.
When these things come up, we need to have a way to pay for them.
Well, people, you know, a lot of people in Silver do not realize the only way other than taxes that we, that we are.
Producing revenue.
Sell water.
Yeah. Water sewer.
The donation.
And I've been.
We already raised that last.
Do what?
We already raised those rates last night.
Well, yeah, I'll be honest with you, I've been told that we are entirely too cheap on water, but.
It depends on which side of the fence you're stepping on with that too. You like dirty water or clean?
Anyway, so that's the story on the motor grader, Terry, you got? Cheryl, is this anything?
Uh, like we're past the road grader now.
Yep.
Yeah, unless you want to add something.
Not really, I mean, there's pros and cons, I mean, if, if we not able to, well, the existing machine will keep functioning. But, yeah, if something can get got very reasonable, it would be worth updating. You know, cause then it could be good for the next twenty, forty years or whatnot. You know, might be a little different.
If I might interject, just because I'm thinking right now. Uh, when we had the last snow. Larry Maitler helped us.
Yeah. I was feeling it somewhere else.
I was gonna say, you have almost a four man crew rolling, didn't you?
Well, there were three of us.
Yeah, I, I was southeast Kansas, worst case.
There's a story in that too. But anyway, uh, I told Terry. The three-point blade that is on the, the four new, or the new Holland tractor that we purchased a few years ago.
Okay, yeah.
That blade's been here forever and I, I actually ran around and opened intersections while Larry was plowing the streets and Kenny was moving snow.
And the dresser.
Yeah.
That tractor. Can utilize a, a bigger, heavier blade and do more than the one that's on it. In essence, that tractor with just a little bigger blade could also be used to help open streets. Because like I had it in four-wheel drive and put her down and you're in high range and you're just.
You were still in high range, you didn't even have to drive it?
What I'm saying is that's, that, there's way more tractor there than there is blade. That blade was great, that blade's probably been here forty years.
It has not been used, is that what you're saying?
Well, it has been, it's just, I'm just saying.
We could utilize.
We could utilize the tractor better.
Blade.
Right.
Which would make that tractor more versatile.
A bigger, a bigger, heavier blade.
Would you go through like Lamb pride and?
Well, uh, just like when we bought.
See if great planes would cut us a deal?
Well, I don't think, because like when we bought the rotary mower, the Rhino. Bought that from Canic Whip.
Right.
I think you have to get it bid through a dealer, I don't think you can go direct to.
Yeah, you gotta go dealer and I can get prices or get quotes.
Have they ever pushed snow with that before? I mean, I've never seen it out pushing snow, I don't.
Well, because you only have.
We haven't had stuff in like ten years.
You don't ever have more than two people hardly.
Well.
One running the grader and one running the payload or whatever, I mean, it just seems like it's a little.
That, but.
A little excessive.
Well, these are all contingencies though, if we actually have a real winter like we haven't had for a long time. Like I say, we've, Kenny, Larry and I ran most of Monday. And I'd already plowed Main Street Sunday night as far as piling snow in the state. So we already had that pretty much done, so basically three of us spent probably a full day. Getting the town opened up. So. Yeah, like I say, if we have, have winters like we've been having.
It's no big deal.
So, anyway, just food for thought. But if you guys, I mean, we can certainly have Terry get some prices. Just have an idea, we can always say, well, let's wait.
And that'd be fine.
I'm, I'm just saying, the, the tractor will, the blade that's on there was designed.
How big's the blade on it?
How big is it?
It's like a five.
Well, it's about a six.
I was gonna say, I thought it was around six.
And that tractor, if you, if you had put an eight on it with a bigger mole board, the tractor's not going to have a problem with it. Like I say, the tractor that that blade was on before was not a front wheel assist.
Yeah.
It was a smaller tractor, it was a lighter tractor. So I'd, I'd say probably an eight-foot blade. Like a ca- category two eight-foot blade.
Okay, okay.
Anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What else we got, Terry?
Well, hey, KDHE, uh, came the other day and inspected the water side of the city. Came out okay. Records, where they go through the records, water plant, uh, the tower, check things out. Few things. Uh, for the future, uh, like where you take the everyday residual. That's going to change, uh, rules after January one where you can't like, like, uh, for example, like right now. It, it, it's got to be done every day, seven days a week and that, that, that test is for, to make sure you've got, uh. The chlorine where your water's been. You will no longer be able to do it five days in a row, like when you come to the, uh, shop. You know what I'm saying, she was saying. Go out, as long as the person doesn't have osmosis and sprinkler and all that stuff. You can go to any one. Person's house and draw off of their hydrant for your everyday residual. That part, for as long as you are not, uh, testing for your, uh, twice a month, uh, bacterial stuff. Cause those still got to fall under your ten test sites approved, so that, that's one change that, you know. And then the other one is like the tower, they said that they'll be changing the regulations. On water towers in the future for, for the better. Tower can go longer on inspections in between time, I think she was saying, like right now, what the rules is it every three years? And she says they're going to, in the future, after the first of the year to where you can go every, uh, one, every five years. Make it a little bit longer, because, uh, which will be, uh, beneficial, a little bit cheaper per se. Cause like we will be up for total reaffirmishment inside and out this coming spring on that tower. Per se, and shoot, that might last a long time after that, uh, type of a thing. I'm just throwing that out as a positive. So. You can go longer on inspection times in the future. If that helps on that.
But that's still under that contract, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Otherwise, that's pretty much it, already talked about. Moving snow, a couple of days there and then still organizing in the shop, that'll just be there, I think. And then, uh, I did talk to Ray Keller, uh, for future down the road for like the school to do the grapple. On the dresser or to pick that back up and start going with it again if they need a big project.
Did he remember?
Yeah, he says that's been a while, or like a few years back, but he said, sure. And whenever that time might come, he said that'd be a great project if, if, if and when that time comes, that's been kicked back. Or like get going again type of a thing. Don't know when, but I've discussed that with him. With the front end loader, what.
That, I guess my question is, you know, we told Lewis to start on it and they started on, but they never finished it.
I think it's just a time thing. I mean, or he just, he'd like to do about anything, I think, but he just sometimes doesn't have enough time.
Well, I know, but I'm, but I'm saying they, he was working in conjunction with Ray. And actually those, the, the brackets are already on there, that's a square tube.
Yeah.
That are on the back of the bucket. But they just never built the grapple. Now, why, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, I think it's time.
Yeah.
On whose part?
Ray and the kids.
Probably Ray's.
Okay.
And it's cause I.
That guy's one of the busiest guys.
Well.
Pretty full, but it's one of those, it's just a subject that it's got picked, I don't know how long back that had been, but. Just saying positively speaking, that had been discussed with them, so that way it's not forgotten. So if he does have the time, when that time comes, all I'd need to do is just leave the dresser up there. Whenever that time comes or whenever they do the initial, it was just, uh, got it going again, talk.
How long would you be willing to leave it up there for?
Well.
A lot of it depends on the kids and the projects the kids are working on, I'm saying.
Yeah.
I said, I, it's a great idea, I'm just, I'm just trying to be, I guess, a realist in regards to Ray's time, the kids' time and our time of needing.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it can't happen, I'm, I'm saying, I'm not sure how.
But for right now, it's just been talked about, picked back up.
Correct.
And then from there. It will come about, don't know when, but if the subject's been brought back up to, don't forget it. Let's do it whenever he needs a project.
Ray needs a project.
I know.
He's eyeballs deep in projects.
Well, I guess the other thing, you know, if he has a kid that. Would like a project, you know, but really. Doesn't have. I guess my thought is farm kids, you know, they always want to build something for the farm. Right? You have someone in shop that really is on the farm and would like a project.
Depends on the semester.
Right. Lot of ifs, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a residue.
Residual.
Oh.
For this, this all stems from the last.
It's been a couple of times.
The last big.
No, I just, you said that and I was like, I thought, I didn't know what you meant, I just never heard anybody pronounce it like that.
Residual, residual.
I've just never heard anybody pronounce it that way, so I thought that's.
It's me, that's what I thought. It's fun.
It's phonetics, I'm dumbfounded.
Making sure it was something I knew what it was, so.
Did you ever hear back from the guys on the list station? Last meeting we were discussing.
The floats getting on that.
False alarm.
No, but I left. But I left them on my last note with them. I left them on, on the last note where.
You've contacted them and the ball's in their court.
To where, don't make a special trip out here just exclusively to do that, only if they're in the area. And then since the meantime on that. I played close attention on how it functions and those floats being where they're at. The last time it did alarm me. I went down there and I paid attention this time, how the flow, uh, it just needed to be cleaned out.
Okay.
And then when I did, like the basket was full, causing the flow of the water seriously. Instead of going into the basket. When the basket gets full of stuff, it throws the water on past the basket, right in the center to where it turbulence the water and then like. Then in the meantime, the crust came in causing it a smaller area for it to be turbulent. So that one afternoon, I, I, I spent time. Knocking the, it, it doesn't take long for the crust and then when I got that basket. Empty. It didn't turbulent those floats, so the floats, uh, when it does alarm, now I'm paying attention to where. It needs cleaned out when it does that, and it doesn't take that much if you stay on it.
Do you still want to have them redo that wiring?
Yes.
But they're on top of the well, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, we need to do that, that's.
I do, I mean, you, you've seen that box is where the wires are hanging out.
Yeah, that, that's scary.
But I will contact them on that because that fella, I don't think we've got, uh, uh, you know, whatever that's called where, not evaluation, but a. Where you, uh, said what you did and here's an evaluation for.
And they didn't give you a quote for that rewatering?
No.
That wasn't part of the, the first.
No, it wasn't, no, it wasn't, the work that they did with, with that bid, they did. Yeah, and that was like to be a separate issue, the electric part.
So once you've seen it, you cannot see it, it's like, that's ugly.
Okay, the problem is safety, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just, I was like, I've seen some bad wiring or luck wiring.
Nuts and it's like, uh.
But I am happy with the work that they did.
If it works and it's safe.
When the alarms did start tagging me, you just, you know, I, yeah, yeah. But then I went and studied what was going on and this and that, and then it's like, okay. Let's try this, well, it's been okay since then. And seriously, it's been okay since then.
Okay.
I'm superstitious.
Anything else?
That's it.
I had a email saying thank you for the great job of the street clearing after the blizzard.
Really?
Yes, just thought I would share.
Than all of us or what?
No, for Winston.
Okay.
What?
You said you mentioned his name, do you know if anything stands out on that issue?
No, I don't, I haven't heard anything, but I do know he left town.
Okay.
Selling them.
Who was, he there or the owner?
Red.
Okay.
Fly itself.
Just to kind of top off what Terry. Terry, Terry went left. And I agreed to watch everything. And the morning of the blizzard, my phone rings at six thirty, you know, whenever it was, and this voice says something and I had no idea. What it was, and he called me. Said, did you get that alarm, it's like, oh, the water plant was calling. That's, the juice went off, we had to reset the breakers at the water plant and the tower.
And the tower.
And, uh.
And it takes a half hour for.
Well, yeah.
Cycle down and.
But I will tell you this, uh, we, Terry and I both agreed, okay, it's time, we, we called upon Lewis just for. Enlightenment and he offered to get out and I said, no, just stay at home, if I need you, I'll come get you, but.
So I forgot about the breakers at the tower.
He was kind enough to help us, because there was one little glitch that, that I wasn't aware of. And he said, you just will come up to the tower and reset it, well, once, once everything reset, then we were good, so.
But he, he was cool with you calling and.
I guess.
Well, he wasn't going to be golfing or fishing.
Well, I, I said something about golfing, he said, I did that yesterday, which was the Saturday before.
Yeah, which was super nice.
Uh, have, have, have you had much occasion to call on him since?
Um, there was a few times before that. And I. Just absolute break glass in case of emergency.
Yeah.
When you need to. And usually I went to him, or here's what I've got, I don't remember.
Right.
Type of a thing, there's just been a few times.
Uh, has, have we other ever compensated him in any way, shape or form?
No.
Okay.
No, cause that would jeopardize.
We have to.
There's a grace period.
Yeah, I knew there was a grace period.
So that's, I guess, that, well, we are now, yes, but at the time we weren't.
Right.
I mean, I guess other than your time, but.
Could we? Like I say, the other, well, my issue, just, I talked to him twice on the phone. I mean, he didn't have to, I guess my question is, would a, would a gift card here in the Christmas season be out of the question?
Flyboy's gift certificate, so.
I'm, I'm just asking. Is that doable?
I think it would be wonderful.
My personal belief is we need to keep him on our good side.
That's right.
Yeah, he could have chuckled and said, you're on your own, Johnny. Anybody suggesting him out? I gotta be honest with you, the flyboy sounds good, but.
They don't do flyboys.
I don't think.
They don't do flyboys? I don't know. They don't do Flyboys? I don't know.
I.
I don't humbrly. I don't know.
Maybe.
Gift card gas, I don't know.
Yeah.
Tim, if he wants to keep it, keep it local.
I'm good with Falcon service if you want. I don't know. Does Tim do?
You got a suggestion?
I was just trying to figure out how to do that. I can find out.
Tim will do it. I mean.
Ask Tim if he could just do gift certificate.
Yeah, that's all I can do.
But see, hey, the problem is, Tim doesn't handle the fuel. That's CBA.
Well, he can. Just, it's just like.
Basically what we would have to do is we'd have to give Tim X amount and then Tim has his own card.
Right.
That, then when Lewis came in, Tim would have to put it on Tim's card.
Right.
For that, for the amount or whatever. So, I mean, it's, it's a long way around.
I think that's as good of. Amount.
Two free rounds of golf.
Well, yeah, he could do that too. Pay for his golfing. I mean, that would be.
Ten bucks.
That's right.
It'd be, it would better all hard bucks if we're playing for gas.
He's not, is he not a Sam Green?
Well, I don't.
No, he just got pissed off a lot of years ago. He said he won't come back.
What's that?
Buttered or something. Oh, he's.
Who did?
Louis.
And who?
Uh?
Ray.
He won't play. He doesn't play golf.
Oh, okay.
Blasting tip and.
Jennifer, would you please see what, see what we can conspire to compensate for him?
I was gonna say, for his years of service, I don't think he got near what he needed to have.
Guys have an amount in mind.
I don't know, Terry, you would, I don't know how much you've called on him. I don't know what, what would you say would be a good amount?
Call anybody for advice on anything. See if you can get it for 25 bucks.
Let's see, 25?
I'd say.
No, I was gonna say if you've called him three times, that's a hundred.
Take by a battery from Falcon or a tire at least.
Uh, yeah.
I'm throwing out 50.
I throw out a hundred fifty. That's me.
I was just thinking.
Jackie, did I do it?
Well, I was just thinking, do you know how many times I get asked medical advice? I never get paid for that. Never.
I, I know.
Oh, well, here.
Hey, I'm, but I, well, I'm not trying to be a Scrooge or a sting, but.
Well, like I said, I don't think he got, when he, for after, what did he get in the Christmas spirit? How many years was he here? Forty-three years and, and for somebody that has served the community for 43 years and he got, what did he get?
Well. Irregardless, his, his.
I get that.
His experience is invaluable.
It is.
It is. I mean, he did a lot.
If we get the big pickle.
He said a hundred. I said a hundred. Terry.
He can't say no.
No, I'm just. I don't think, I don't think it's out of line.
Well, what's, would that buy three tanks of gas? Or one ba, less than one battery?
Well, a hundred, yeah, if he needs a battery or if he needs whatever Tim would have up there, I guess we could.
Tire, a couple tire repairs.
I guess, does he do business or? I.
I'm assuming.
I have seen the man one time, one, twice or three since he retired. Just never seen him.
I haven't seen a lot of people in a year, so I don't know.
You wanna make them up?
Chamber bucks. Do we have chamber bucks?
Gotta have, gotta have a chamber. Chamber bucks.
I don't know what Chambers doing. It's kinda off the charts right now. I make a motion that we give Louis a hundred dollar gift card. For services rendered assistance.
That would be consultation fees.
Consultation fees, okay.
And see, when you throw that in there, then that's legit.
Experience.
Second.
I'll second.
But moving second to do something in the way of a hundred dollar gift certificate for Lewis for helping us out.
Can we consider this a retainer too?
Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. I should carry it. What?
It was quiet.
Two votes.
It was quiet.
Wait, I don't, I don't know that you considered it carried.
Okay.
It's not carried.
Three abstain then, or two abstain? Two abstain. Two voting members voted two abstains.
We voted, we had two ayes, but no nays.
Right. So, does it carry?
Well, since you have two, two obsessions.
Okay.
It should carry. Cause abstention means he just relinquished his right to vote. Now, if it's a nay, that's a whole nother ballgame.
Right, right, right.
Knowing, knowing that, do we wanna redo it?
If it carried, it carried.
Well, I'm just offering.
Or it doesn't carry. That's what I'm saying is.
Yeah. I mean, Robert's rules of orders, real plain on this. Obsessions are obsessions, yays are yays and nays are nays.
All right. Excuse me. Terry, nothing else?
No.
Um, was there, was there something on, I'm trying to remember on the water tower that we had to spend money to get it redone or is that?
We can, because we have that contract, it's part of the contract that we pay. We pay a quarterly fee to them. And so that, they did raise the rates for, um. I'm trying to remember, it was not a significant amount. I wanna say, don't quote me, but around a hundred dollars, they raised our quarterly amount.
I think you're right.
To, to cover the cost of what it's gonna take to do that in the spring. But it is part of that quarterly payment that we make, so.
Something else? Brian?
I'm good.
Connor? Jackie?
Yep, good.
Financial report?
Jennifer, did you need to present anything else?
I don't think so. Total income, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-four. Total expense, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-two, forty-four for the month. The warrants should be, everyone's. Any questions on warrants? And our first payment for the North Central Regional Planning Commission, I did the request, first request for, um, grant funds. And for the, that amount that will pay for the inspections and administration costs.
Just the 10,000.
The 10,000 dollars, seven hundred and fifty. So, um, she said it takes approximately 10 days for my request. From when it would get here soon. That'll be kind of an in and out because the grant funds, I mean, we'll receive grant funds and then it'll go right out as soon as I receive the funds. Trying to think, is there anything else?
Contract or the emergency management?
That is for our civic ready.
Is that what David Doe?
That's what David Doe came in and talked to.
No, this is for.
But I wonder.
Yeah, this is, we, so we contract, the, the one that gives you guys the alerts, the one that's the emergency management system. And that gives the alerts on phones. That's, that's civic ready contract, which is separate from the other contract, which I actually have.
Once a year or once?
Have we ever used the city of Sylvan civic ready?
That's what I use to do the, the mobile phone notifications. Did, did everybody?
Meetings?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know you used civic ready for that.
Yep, that's what I use that for. But that's, yeah, I mean, that's kinda all.
I was wondering why your name didn't come up?
Oh, it didn't?
No, it just comes up a number.
It just comes up a number?
Well, see, they've changed it two or three times and I haven't, interesting. Cause it used to come up under, yeah, it should've.
It's nine four nine dash O two, Sylvan Grove City Council Meeting.
Interesting. Cause it's sometimes, at one point it was coming up as the phone number here.
Well, yeah, I can remember that.
I, I don't know why it's different. Cause I use it, I use it, I mean, I haven't changed anything on my end. I just go on to the civic ready system and post.
Yeah.
Now, did, did everybody get a test from the sheriff's office on the third?
I didn't, cause I. I don't have a phone. My phone is broken right now. It's free.
For two weeks, she's phoneless.
Oh, is it like upgrade coming up?
Um, I have one of those Apple models that requires sent in to Apple to be repaired.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can't drop it off the water tower.
Or throw it at Apple.
Is there any questions on that?
I'll make it, I'll make a motion to accept financials in print.
Second.
You have a second to accept the financials, pay the bill. Any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
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 Put the same sign. I should carry it. Oh, we forgot the most important one. Told Jennifer, put that on. Years past, we've had occasions, we go eat together, everybody pays for their own. I just, just as a reminder of me to bring it up. If your docket's full like mine.
I think I'm, I think I'm open in March. That's about it.
I'm just, you know, if anybody has a burning desire, we'll, otherwise, I like to say, we've done it. Probably done it as many times, sometimes we have.
I was gonna say. As long as I've been on, maybe twice.
Yeah. Nobody says anything, we'll just forego it. Anything else? Your can must be a jerk.
I'm a weird jerk.
There you go.
Put it eight forty-four, so we're one minute earlier than last one.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm not gonna give anybody a chance to vote, no.
Yeah, um, tree root stuff?
Yeah, yeah. Across the tree?
Yeah. I can get you.
Okay.
Cause I carry a can on me in the vehicle just in case a public Joe hits me up. I got.